Alana Mellon is joining the meeting.
Ellen is joining the meeting.
Hi Ellen.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, I can hear you councillor. The meeting has not started yet.
Lou Anne Bruno is joining the meeting. Doctor. Is joining the meeting.
Councillor Nolan is joining the meeting.
Tiam Sabrina Wheeler.
Is joining the meeting.
Quentin.
Is joining the meeting.
Nancy Mahan is joining the meeting.
So before we start, I just want to make sure that there's a large group of city people that they're on the line. Ellen, are you on the line?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Claude? Alright. Dr. Lou Anne?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy? Mahan?
Yes.
Thank you. Asad, were you able to join us?
I'm on the phone.
Oh, that's great. So it looks like all we're waiting for from the city guest list is Claude. He should be on any second, my guess. Thank you everybody for doing this. Ah Claude, but he should be in any second. I think we could start because he's not in the first presentation, so I'm fine if you want to start.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is a special meeting of the City Council to receive COVID-19 updates from the City Manager.
Is joining the meeting.
From the City Manager and his staff. Before we begin, we will do a roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Claude Jacobs.
Is joining the meeting.
When I read your name, please state if you're present. Councillor Carlon. Councillor Carlon.
Present.
Present. Vice Mayor Mellon?
Yes, present.
Present. Councillor McGovern? Councillor McGovern? Absent. Councillor Nolan?
Present.
Present. Councillor Simmons? Councillor Simmons? Absent. Councillor Sabrina Wheeler? Councillor Sabrina Wheeler? Absent.
Present, but it's difficult to hear you at the moment.
Present. Councillor Toomey?
Present.
Present. Councillor Zandervan?
Present.
Present. Mayor Siddiqui?
Present. So with the quorum being present and most of my colleagues being remote, we will start, we'll hear from the City Manager first, and then there will be a series of presentations. City Manager?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for calling this special meeting to discuss an update on the city's COVID-19 efforts. I would just like to say that at the table is Commissioner Abad, who will be part of our presentation. We also have, from the city staff, Nancy Glowa, David Keel, and Matt Nelson. And we'll be receiving presentations after Commissioner Abad. The first one will come from Ellen Semenoff and Mara Penzek, and that'll be followed by Asad Seiya, and then Claude Jacobs, Dr. Lou Anne Bruno, and Nancy Mahan will also all make a presentation. So we have a lot of information to discuss tonight. But before I turn it over to them, I just wanted to say a few quick words. I think as most people are aware, the War Memorial Field House and Quarantine Area are now both operational. This weekend, really because of the incredible hard work by Bay Cove Human Services, Public Health, Cambridge Police Department, and Pro Ambulance, we had a smooth and uneventful transition. I want to acknowledge and thank especially Bay Cove slash Casper for their work in running the city's warming center and now the Field House operation. They have a very challenging role, and I can tell you, I am so impressed and grateful for their compassion, dedication, and professionalism they bring to the work they do each day. I especially have to thank and recognize Nancy. To say she's been incredible is not fair. It's been far beyond what I could have imagined. I also want to thank Ellen, Liz Mengers, Claude Jacobs, Commissioner Abad, Deputy Superintendent Low, and all their team members to really, the effort that they've put in throughout this, but especially Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, to make sure things were going smooth and will continue to go smooth. As you are aware, we partnered with Pro EMS and the Broad Institute to conduct the COVID-19 testing for the people who are in the facilities. So far, testing has been completed for individuals that use the City Warming Center in 240 Albany Street. I want to thank Pro EMS and Broad for their dedication in this collaboration. I also want to thank the members of the strike team who've been involved in this, some of which come from the Cambridge Police and Fire Departments and the Public Health Department. This has truly been an impressive group of people who are incredibly committed to doing the right thing. Today, I want to announce that we've also deployed city sound trucks to broadcast important COVID-19 prevention measures around Cambridge parks and in our neighborhoods. The message will begin and will remind residents that stay-at-home advisory remains in effect, that to wear face masks covering wherever outside or in stores, and to continue social distancing. Later this week, we will be able to broadcast these in multi-language as well. Also today, we launched our next initiative to help seniors in our community. We now have a senior outreach team that are calling seniors in the community who are over 70. They are checking in with them and seeing if they need assistance. We currently have 13 staff members from various departments making these calls, and we can scale that up as needed, but we wanted this week to start with 13. And I want to thank Brian Claw, who's going to be the point for this group, and Legion Eddie for all his work to get that message set up. Last week, we began and accepted applications for the Mayor Disaster Relief Fund. And as I mentioned, I was proud that within five days of opening applications, we issued $88,000 approximately in checks to 74 Cambridge residents and family. Today, we issued another $103,000 worth of checks to another 82 residents and families. And again, I really want to thank DHSP, the Audit Department, the Mayor's Office, and the Finance Team for really making this possible. To date, we've distributed almost $200,000 to 156 clients. We all should be proud of the quick turnaround time in the process to approve these applications and to distribute checks. Also, an area, and this is pretty amazing because most of this has all happened since we talked last week, but also an area that I want to bring people update in is we've talked about is our Homeless Shelter and Local Restaurant Community Meals Program that began in March. Since the program started, 18 restaurants have participated. We've provided over 7,800 meals, with an average of about 2,000 meals a week. So far, we have invested back to our local residents over $62,000. Also this weekend, Staff of Inspection Service Department continue to check on social distancing and public guidelines and compliance at retail and food establishments. That was Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday they were out there. As I mentioned last week, they also provided masks for smaller businesses that did not have them. We've now distributed over 2,000 masks. We are also working closely with the staff of the Public Health Department to make sure businesses know how to properly clean and disinfect their places of business. Finally, I want to thank our residents who continue to work hard to comply with the social and physical distancing advisories. It is critical that residents continue to stay at home whenever possible, to wear face coverings if they need to go out, especially in grocery stores or pharmacies, and to practice good hand hygiene. Finally, again, I want to thank all of our employees for their dedication and their commitment to making sure the city and our residents are handled in the proper way. I want our employees, the council, and our residents to know how proud we are and appreciate all the work they are doing. With this, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Abad to start the presentations. Thank you.
Afternoon, and through you, Madam Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Manager. So I just want to start off by just pointing out how smooth the initial transition has been with the phased opening of the War Memorial Temporary Homeless Shelter and the Quarantine Facility. For such a complex undertaking with so many moving parts consisting of cities, state, and non-governmental organizations, the opening has really been virtually seamless. As you know, the Quarantine Quarter section opened first. To date, there have been several guests who have been transported from that quarantine area to one of the state isolation facilities, that either being the Aloft located in Lexington or the Invision Hotel located in Everett. Saturday, in a joint effort between so many people, Public Health, Health and Human Services, Bay Cove, Pro Ambulance, and us, we were able to successfully transfer a cohort of individuals from the Warming Center to the Field House Shelter. The next cohort phase will come from 240 Albany, and that's literally unfolding as we speak. It's anticipated that that cohort will consist of primarily 40 to 60 individuals. And we continue to provide ample coverage of the area to address any community needs or concerns should they arise. But the main point that I want you to take away from what I have to say is that the transition, that opening of both the quarantine facility and shelter was seamless and very smooth.
So before I turn it over to Mara and Ellen, I know Dr. Asad has other commitments. So, Dr. Asad, are you ready to go now, or can I have that other presentation, what works best for you? Because I know you're not staying for the whole meeting.
I have a few minutes, but it's your call. You're running the show.
Okay, so why don't we have you speak, and then before we turn it over to your team, we'll then have Mara and Ellen follow up.
Is leaving the meeting.
We'll follow up with some Housing and Human Service pieces, and then we can go from there. So, Dr. Asad, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. To you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you this afternoon. And thanks for taking the time to put this important issue in front of the City Council and the city at large. As somebody who's been practicing emergency medicine for over 30 years and has been involved in disaster preparedness and disaster mitigation for almost as long, I can say that there is tremendous amount of work that's been done in preparation throughout the city in general and specifically for the homeless shelter at the War Memorial. I'd like to recognize the support, the tremendous support from the city, and truly applaud the collaboration that I've really rarely seen at the level that I've seen in the last few weeks, to make sure that what we have today in Cambridge is something we could be proud of, and it is a reality, and it is. Starting with the leadership of the Mayor and the City Council, the City Manager, the various departments of the city, particularly the Police, Public Works, and the Public Health Department. And I don't want to miss anybody. This was a really, a truly, a team effort to get us where we are today. From a clinical point of view and from a practical point of view, I think this is the best outcome that one could wish for in any environment. And I personally, I am very proud and very supportive of the work that's been done in here. It is no short of a huge lift to get us to where we are today. And thanks to everybody that's on the call and many, many people working behind the scenes. And my appreciation and recognition for all the work that's being done. It's something that we truly. Mark McGovern.
Is joining the meeting.
That is the end of my remarks.
Okay, thank you. So I know housing has been a priority of the City Council for a long time, and I think as we focused on COVID-19, especially over the last four weeks, one of the things we made everyone aware of that housing still had to be a top priority, especially during this crisis. And Mara and Ellen have played a lead role in that, and I'm going to have Mara and Ellen just talk about housing. I think we're starting with Mara, and then the role it also played in the application process for the Mayor's Relief Fund. And then we'll go back to the Cambridge Health Alliance/Health Department presentation. Thank you. Mara?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and through you, Madam Mayor. I've often said in the past eight months that I've been here that I'm really honored to be part of the city's team, and I couldn't be more proud. The more people I've met as I've done this work in the city and everyone, as Dr. Asad just said, behind the scenes, it's really quite incredible how many people are joining, working to address this on all kinds of levels, including the housing level. So I'm happy to share a few highlights of our efforts to date. And I wanted to start by saying that, as always, to address the housing concerns both during and absent of COVID, we're really working to coordinate and collaborate between and within our city's housing resources. Through my position, through the City Manager's Office, with DHSP, especially the Multi-Service Center, and through CDD and the Housing Division. So together, we've been working to enhance and expand our individual responses to residents, while also addressing issues systemically. And that's the approach that we've taken during this crisis. The three things that we've been focusing on are certainly continuing to respond to our residents on an individual and personalized level. It's exceptionally important, as you know, during this time of crisis. So we're doing our best to talk with and resolve situations for everyone that reaches out. But we've also created tools for outreach and information to ensure that folks do know where to reach us, and so that they can ask questions and get answers for themselves, and also understand the larger picture of things that are going on. And then, of course, we're working to effect system change by working in partnership with owners and management companies to implement both required and requested policy and practices and changes. To that end, what we've done so far is, the first thing we did was create a housing page on the city's COVID-19 website. It listed contact information, direct contact information for myself, Chris Cotter of CDD, and Maria Mello, the Director of Multi-Service Center, so that residents could contact us directly. It also has basic information, frequently asked questions, and links to other resources. And we're continuing to update this with new and relevant information. Along with this, we established a special housing resource line. And these calls basically are sent to all three of us, our departments, so that we can coordinate our oversight and respond according to the need. I have to give a shout out to Maria, though, because as the calls have poured in, she became the primary coordinator of this and worked with her team to respond to most of the calls while sorting through what really would come to myself or CDD. There's been about 300 calls so far, and then, of course, we're continuing to get many emails to each of us. And the questions and the calls range from non-COVID-related to COVID-related needs. So, you know, the river doesn't stop, as they say. We're continuing to respond to housing needs such as folks calling in about housing search and other things that are happening in housing that are not because of or impacted by COVID. Am I still on?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. It sounded like it went blank. The next thing we did was we created a basic flyer that was sent to many management companies, asking them to share our contact information and resources with tenants. So again, really trying to focus in on getting our information out, making sure folks had access to us, and responding to individual needs. But most recently, in coordination with the City Manager and the Commissioner of Public Health, in terms, in coordination with the order to establish the moratorium on eviction enforcement and nonessential entry, we sent that letter to more than 180 owners and management companies. And included in that order was, again, another flyer asking these owners and management companies to let their tenants know of the resources in the city and give our contact information. And we also requested a number of policy and practice changes that we'd like to see happen. That included flexible due dates of rent payments and suspension of incurred late fees, flexible timelines of lease renewal agreements with month-to-month extensions, consideration to utilize last month's rent and/or security deposits to cover rent during this time without needing to replenish that, suspension of penalty fees for non-renewal of timeline compliance, suspension of lease break fees for residents who have had to move because of COVID, fee waivers for electronic payments, and suspension of rent increases. Well, our affordable housing developers have certainly been at the forefront of implementing several or all of these strategies, but other management companies and owners have also stepped up and are implementing some or all of those requests. But we're continuing, of course, to monitor that and try to make sure that companies are offering as many of these accommodations as possible. So I guess I'll just end by saying that, you know, we really want to keep the residents informed and updated, both on local, state, and federal information that's coming out, and to work with owners and management companies to continue to adopt these changes. But also, we really are starting to take a look at what's next for many residents. How can we be ahead of the long or even the medium impact that the crisis will have on housing stability? Because it's not going to end right away, as you know. Some of these temporary policies and practices, we're going to have to look at to see what can be made a little bit more permanent or a little bit more long-term. So we're hoping to continue to have those conversations. And I guess with that, I'll turn it over to the Assistant City Managers, Ellen Semenoff.
Thanks, Mara. I'm really happy to be able to talk about the work of the Mayor's Disaster Relief COVID-19 Fund. As you probably are aware, there is an awesome team that is doing all this work. I can't possibly name everyone, but it's really important for you to have some idea of who stands behind this. Obviously, the Mayor and the City Manager have played a critical role in leading this work. The front line of this effort is a team of over 50 staff, mostly Human Services, but with key staff from other departments. And these are the folks who are returning the calls from residents, who are looking for help in filing an application. And they're also staff who are reviewing the applications that were filed online directly by our residents. With most of those applications that were filed online, staff are also having to reach out to the residents to ask them questions and to help them upload the supporting documents they need. We also have a small team of staff who are providing support to all of these frontline staff because, as you can imagine, there are lots of issues that need to be worked through that inevitably arise with the nuances of the eligibility rules and of looking at all the supporting documents. We also have an incredible team of four approvers. Mara is one of them. Susan Mintz, Claudia Cruz, and Maria Mello are the other three. And as they do the final approval of the applications, they go to auditing and finance for final review and payment. The partnership that we have with Jim Monago, Michelle Kincaid, and Kito Evora has been wonderful. And as the City Manager said, it's resulted in the payment last week of 82 households and another 74 today. Those 74 were the result of staff working over the weekend and yesterday to ensure that these applications could get moved through for payment. But I also want to say that none of this would have been possible without the support of our amazing IT team, Eric Belford, Paul. the support of our amazing IT team, Eric Belford, Paul and Bruce, who designed, redesigned, and then troubleshooted at all hours the system, and also the phone system. Kevin Trail and his side of the team, Mike Dugus from IT, were instrumental. To date, we've received over 420 calls and about, on our phone lines, and about a third of those are calls from people who needed access to the staff we have, who speak Spanish, Haitian Creole, Amharic, Bengali, Chinese, Portuguese, and Arabic. We've also been able to provide support in Hindi because of the language capacity from the Mayor's staff. In addition to returning the calls, the staff help residents fill out applications and review their applications online. In addition to the telephone support in multiple languages, the application instructions on the city website have also been translated into those same language. We currently have 661 applications which staff are now reviewing or working with applicants over the phone to complete. About 40% of these applications are from tenants who live in subsidized housing. About 6% of the applications are from homeowners through the city's Affordable Housing Program. To be eligible to apply, an applicant must be a Cambridge resident, must have a household income at or below 100% of median income. They must be a tenant or a homeowner who purchased through the city's Affordable Housing Programs, and they must show a loss of income due to COVID-19. The applicants are eligible for utility payments for one month, for household needs payments, and for one month, I'm sorry, one month rental payment. If a tenant is not eligible, to have their rent recertified based on their post-COVID-19 income. That's the overview of where we are at this moment, and we will be continuing over the course of the next weeks to process the applications as they come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. So, in closing now, we'll talk about where we are in terms of shelter, and we're going to have Claude Jacobs and his team, they should introduce themselves and say what their titles are as they make in their presentation, but I think Claude you're first, so I'm going to turn it over to you and whatever audio you want to go in. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you to you, Madam Mayor, and to the rest of the City Council. Just want to say thanks again for this opportunity to provide an update. I am joined by Dr. Luanne Bruno-Murtha from the Cambridge Health Alliance, as well as Nancy Mahan from Bay Cove. I'll tee it up, and then I'll turn it over to the two of them to fill in. But again, can't say thanks enough to the leadership, and I know that Dr. Sayad has signed off, but I do appreciate his support, especially anchored to the Cambridge Health Alliance. So, where are we today? So, in terms of case counts, I'll talk about case counts. I'll give you at least a flavor of what's changing as we speak, in terms of the support from the state. You've already heard reference to the work in the Temporary Emergency Shelter. I did want to provide an update tied to our Rapid Testing Pilot Project. I know there'd been some questions about health disparities data, and just acknowledging the importance of communicating to the masses. So, let me at least acknowledge the different themes, and then I'll fill this in. And I do appreciate your allowing me to at least share. So, in the Commonwealth to date, so nearly 40,000 cases confirmed positives across the Commonwealth. To date, there have been over 1,800 reported fatalities here in Cambridge, and this is a fluid situation. So, as of this afternoon, the figure was 596 reported confirmed cases among Cambridge residents, and I know that that is probably over 600 as we speak. New cases, just know that we report out twice a day, and between this morning and this afternoon, there were 23 new confirmations that I reported out to our Emergency Operations Center. To date, we have been, we have 28 fatalities, and there are 21 individuals currently being hospitalized. Just to give you a context of those 600 or so cases, 2/3 of those are among community residents, the other 3 having to do with nursing home population and the assisted lifting facilities. We've been in there full tilt for the last 10 days, and so just know that that's, that's an inflator for what we've been reporting as our case count. Not surprisingly, that nearly half of the cases are among women, although we do know, in looking at the data, that about a fifth of that, 20% of our cases have incomplete data tied to gender, and that's the same conundrum tied to our racial data, which we're trying to clean up. And just know that nearly a quarter of our confirmed cases to date are among those who are 80 years and older. So, over the course of the last few weeks, and especially the last two weeks or so, we now have case counts that reflect residents of Cambridge only. We had to go back and forth and clean some of the way that we reported out, both community and the long-term care facilities, and we can provide those two separate case counts. We now, through the, because of the activation of the Temporary Emergency Shelter, we do have case counts to include the homeless population, although we will not be providing a breakout of cases among this population. As of this week, the state has now leaned in to at least provide additional support tied to contact tracing. This is a very labor-intensive process where we're calling to make sure that folks understand what quarantine means. We instruct them about taking their temperature every day. We ask if they have sufficient food, their symptom checks. So, there's a whole process to contact tracing, but because of the labor tied to that, the state is, through the Commonwealth, is rolling out what's called the Community Tracing Collaborative. And we're one of the two dozen cities that are at least in queue for having folks on the ground to help us, support us, to do our contact tracing. Just know that this is going live as we speak. It's anchored to our database, the state's database, called Maven, the Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiologic Network. We were the first local health department in Commonwealth to go live with Maven, and so we are, we are active users of that database, and that's where we, we get our case counts to report out to the community. The reason I mention that is that at my first meeting of the City Council, I talked about staff wear and tear, and just know that since February 4th, our public health nurses have not had a single day off, making sure that we pay attention to the potential transmission of disease and this virus here in the community. Couple other things that I do want to mention, and I do want to acknowledge that this could not have been made possible without the strong support from all the partners across the city. So, I did want to just at least acknowledge, without going through all the names, but just a flavor of what we're seeing on the ground. Couple of examples. So, over the last few weeks, we can tell you that since March 10th, for example, we've had over 600 inquiries to our department, whether it's through the email inbox that we created, or through our phone line, which we check regularly. The first wave of those calls were about risks, or symptoms, or where to get tested, and a lot of questions around the Biogen event tied to that. The second wave of the queries that we received had to do with concern over the lack of closures, like the businesses or the construction sites. And currently, what we're seeing is ongoing concern around the lack of compliance with social distancing, or wearing masks outside of supermarkets. There are concerns about the elderly and the residents of the skilled nursing facilities. I mention that only because we're paying attention to how we can not only be more responsive, but through the support made available in the City Manager's Office, where we're trying to be not only as responsive, but also to message accordingly back to residents who have been reaching out to us directly. I am going to talk about the Nursing Home Rapid Testing Project and the Task Force, but let me at least acknowledge, in light touches, the Temporary Emergency Shelter activation. As you heard from Commissioner Bard, we did this in two phases. Can't say thanks enough to the Task Force that helped to identify that and secure that for the community. Our partners, you've already heard about Bay Cove, also would acknowledge the Healthcare for the Homeless Program, not only the Police Department, but in particular, Public Works and Human Services. You've already heard about the quarantine site, so since April 16th, we've had six guests in that lower level of the garage. All six of those guests have converted to be confirmed as positive. Five of them already have been transferred out to the designated regional isolation centers. There's one in Lexington, there's now one in Everett, and I do believe this afternoon, the final guest will be transferred out to the Everett site. Why is that important? And I'll talk more about the rapid tests, but we learned a lot over the last 10 days about how to do this in the nursing homes as part of an early warning, early monitoring system, and we appended that as part of our protocol for activating the shelter. So, the Warming Center was the first place where we had this pre-screening program, which has gone well by our accounts, and you've already heard, and I'll defer to Bay Cove, Nancy Mahan from Bay Cove, to talk more about what we're seeing in the transition with the Albany Street site. The other, the other partnerships, so there does exist a dedicated expert advisory panel. That group meets every Tuesday at 2:00. It's co-chaired by Jill Crittenden out of MIT, and William Hannidge out of Harvard School of Public Health, staffed by one of, a member of my staff, which is Stan Lipson. And I got to tell you that every Tuesday at 2:00, and Dr. Luanne Bruno-Murtha is a member, and can chime in about her experience. It was really at the behalf of this group and others that we mobilized these experts to help us think through the different dimensions, and to at least support our thinking as we're going through making these decisions on behalf of the residents. So, talking about risk exposure to the elderly, the importance of social distancing, there was a question around street closures, and even really campaigns around the one-way sidewalks. So, just know that these are not academic exercises, but there is a practical component and a lens to help us make decisions. The communications folks, every day, and really thanks to Ouija and Eddie and his crew, you know, they have daily calls in the morning. We have deadlines every evening to support the, provide the case counts, whether it's question and answers, Q&amp;A documents, graphs that we're now populating on the website, or assisting with joint press releases. Just know that that is really because of the partnership that we've been able to push that out. In terms of data, what I would like to say is that there was a question a couple of weeks ago around some of the data that we're gathering. Just know that that still remains a conundrum, not just locally, but across the state and nationally. I can tell you that we are ready to push out and show at least the composite of what we're seeing in terms of the positive cases by race and ethnicity. Our challenge is that because the data have been somewhat incomplete, especially under the other or unknown categories, we just want to make sure that you're aware that as you see the data broken out by race and ethnicity, that you keep that in mind. Again, it's not unique to us. This is something that our team is taking very seriously. We are working with our state-level partners to figure out a better way to fill in the gaps, but at least in broad strokes, these are reports that you will see updated and shared in the public domain. But that's something that helps us at least have a better picture of what we're seeing across the city. For now, we are releasing zip code maps, so heat maps, and you can see that they're posted on the city's website. This gives you at least a sense by the five zip codes. Not surprisingly, 02139, which is the most densely populated zip code, that seems to have the largest number of cases or reported positives here among Cambridge residents. And we're also able to show cases by zip code and the number of cases per 10,000, so it gives us a better sense of a rate. I wanted to at least provide some, one example tied to this pilot project that we launched in the area of nursing homes, and I just want to underscore my appreciation for the partnership through the Broad Institute, our partners, our strong partners at Pro EMS. The initial ask was for us to try to do this ourselves, and I got to tell you, I was concerned about wear and tear for our nurses in particular. So, just keep that in mind, that the way that we're able to do this, which now has been replicated as a, as an initiative across the Commonwealth, because this was announced a few days ago, it's really thanks in large part to the out-of-bought thinking by our partners here in the city. So, while this rapid pilot project was aggressive, but a progressive program to mitigate loss of life among Cambridge's most vulnerable populations in relation to COVID-19, just know that the results allow us, as players on the ground, the ability to openly discuss needs, resources, and logistics. So, this was really using more data so that we have a better sense of where the burden may lie, especially in these facilities. So, we applied lessons learned from the nursing homes and the long-term care facilities, and we already see how we've been able to apply that to our homeless shelters in that population. This remains an ongoing project that will still require further time and attention, but at least at first glance, we're seeing that the initial results are paying off. So, let me lay out the context, and I know that I do want to turn it over to my colleagues, but I do feel that it's important to share with you, since this happened over the course of the last 10 days. So, the Rapid Pilot for Surveillance of Cambridge Skilled Nursing Facilities and the Assisted Facility, Living Facilities, it is a comprehensive project to conduct gold standard COVID-19 testing of patients, residents, and staff members of the seven identified facilities. So, we launched this on April 9th. You probably saw, you may have seen a press release on April 13th, sharing the preliminary results. Those facilities are the Sancta Maria, the Neville Center, the Neville Place, Cambridge Homes, Cadbury Commons, Cambridge Rehab and Nursing, and Uville. I do want to thank those sites, the administrators, the staff, for helping us gain a better insight of what's happening in their facilities, and more importantly, to trust us as a resource to support them while they're dealing with this COVID storm. So, as I mentioned, it's anchored to our department, is collaboration with the Broad and Pro EMS, with the goal of providing surveillance level testing without regard for symptoms. So, we went in, tested staff and residents symptomatic, and as well as those who were not exhibiting symptoms. So, the results empower the facilities to make informed logistic, operational logistical changes to their workflow, and thereby ensuring an aggressive offensive to the COVID-19 which is occurring, especially for Cambridge's most vulnerable population. So, it's all about having data so that we can be more nimble and redeploy the best assets to mitigate the spread of the virus. Given the nature of the shift work of the staff at all the facilities, it was virtually impossible to test all staff members on-site. So, thanks to Pro, they established a drive-through testing, which was initiated in 12-hour shifts with flexible online scheduling. So, we kicked this off on Thursday, the 9th. So, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and the following Monday, they provided that, to make sure that there was an opportunity for staff to also be tested. And these are high-level. I just want to give at least the council a flavor of what we've done. So, imagine, if you will, very intense, while trying to deal with other queries and requests made to our department. But I also do want to thank Nancy Ryan Porter, who has been anchored to this, as well as our esteemed public health nurses, who do this every day, but this was an opportunity to have better connectivity to support the facilities. So, over those, we did this in two phases of testing over the last 10 days. So, the first phase, we had over 1,000 residents and staff who were tested using the nasal pharyngeal swab. Phase two, which happened over the last few days, we had over 900 residents and staff who were tested using the same procedure, and approximately 500 of those also opted to take a voluntary finger stick blood antigen test. And again, there's a lot of talk about how this is playing out, and what are the different approaches that we can take across the country, but just know that this is something that we, through this pilot, are testing out as well. Some of the trends, we've seen at First Pass, very high rate of infection, particularly within the skilled nursing facilities. We have recognized a great variation, depending on, in the results, depending on the facility's subculture or organizational structure. So, we've seen that. And we did notice a higher rate of asymptomatic COVID-positive cases than what was anticipated. We've had a range of response rates between the residents, as well as staff, recognizing that the challenge with the staff is that it's virtually impossible to capture all staff due to some of the workforce challenges, and that's something we're still working through. So, the comparison, apples to apples. So, when we did this the first time around, we found that in terms of the resident population, you know, 28% of them tested positive in phase one compared to 33% of them in phase two. In terms of the staff, at First Pass, when we did this, 13% of the staff tested positive in phase one compared to 10% of the staff in phase two. Why do we do that? Again, this is designed as an early warning system to help us at least pay attention, recognizing what we've seen, at least with some of the studies in the Boston metro area and across the country, about the challenges with testing and testing kits, and just having data in real time. I, I'm wrapping up this portion, and I just want to acknowledge that the pre-screening program that we launched in the that we launched in the homeless shelters, primarily at the Warming Center, as well at the 240 Albany Street site, we were able to apply lessons learned from the splits in the area of nursing homes. And I do wanna thank Nancy and her team for helping us to at least test this out in order to have an overlay of protection as part of our intake process for the field house. Because we are dealing with an outbreak on the ground, we're able to deploy the same team from Pro to support us at the Salvation Army to test both, to test both staff and residents. And as I mentioned, in the quarantine area, if you can imagine that now, because we know the positivity of the clients, we're able to at least have those who are suspect cases placed in quarantine, and then eventually transferred out to a regional isolation center. And I'm thankful to the state for having that made available. I've talked a lot about testing. I will just mention that in terms of the complement, there is a separate task force that has been at the ready and responsive to the needs of these facilities. You hear a lot about the testing and the data, but I also wanna acknowledge the importance. And this is really, Dr. Seiya mentioned it at the outset, that we had to have this in place. So, this task force, the Cambridge COVID Task Force, is in place to support the skilled nursing facilities. It consists of various disciplines and is staffed by members of city agencies and community partners. These include, but not limited to, folks from the Cambridge Health Alliance, Mount Auburn Hospital, Cambridge Fire, Cambridge Police, as well as Pro EMS, and of course, our Health Department. Additional agencies and organizations, including resource requests for the Medical Reserve Corps and state-level supports such as the National Guard and the state, will be added as needed. I only wanna acknowledge that based on the lens of the task force, we have more insight. Some of this may be intuitive to the group, but just know that this is what we learned, and this is what we're planning for, not only with nursing homes, but also with the, as we look at the impacts and the needs with our area shelters. So, staff shortages due to positives or just fear of exposure, so whether it's call-outs or just staff in general concerned about showing up to work. Supply shortages, personal protective equipment, and in particular gown shortages, we've heard that as a theme with these facilities. But at the end of the day, we're here to help, and so we, on the ground, we're trying to support the administrators, again, dealing with issues around cohorting of patients now that they actually have data and they know who's positive, and just reconfiguring how they do their work in those facilities. So, I'll end by saying that the sentinel question that folks have asked around disparities, I'll just remind us all that we do have assets on the ground. A few days ago, we had a focus group with the community engagement team and literacy ambassadors to find out what community members actually know about COVID-19. On Monday, April 27th, the Health Department and Men's Health League, they're hosting a workshop on men's mental health during COVID-19 pandemic, and so we'll make sure to circulate that information around to folks. And just the reminders that we try to amplify around the use of masks, the importance of social distancing, taking care of mental health. Right now, we're working on guidance for those celebrating Ramadan. So, I mentioned that on top of all the things that we're doing with the businesses around hygiene guidance, or food waste guidance, or just resources that folks need in area food markets. So, I, sorry for the long presentation, but I do feel that it's important for you all to have a flavor of what we're experiencing on the ground. The team is hanging in there. I do wanna just say thanks again to the mayor, the city manager, and Dr. Seiya amongst each and every one of you for your support over these many weeks. We're still early in this race, but I do wanna make sure that you're at least more aware of what we're doing on the ground, and also offering you a preview of coming attractions. I'll stop there, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Bruno, Luanne Bruno-Murtha, as well as Nancy to fill in and provide their updates.
Thank you, Claude, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, Madam Mayor and councilors, and I'll give you a snapshot of what the hospital situation looks like. As of today, we have hospitalized a total of nearly 450 patients with COVID disease. 81 of those patients have been on ventilators, but the good news is, we've now discharged nearly half of those patients. Just today, we have a total of 106 patients hospitalized with either confirmed or suspected COVID. 14 patients are on ventilators. Yesterday, we discharged 19, so our numbers are actually looking better. We are doing a much better job at keeping patients out of the intensive care unit or our surge critical care units, because we have deployed a high-flow oxygen on our med-surg floors, and consequently, our med-surg capacity is almost 100%, and we have ample capacity right now in our critical care areas. So, that is, you know, that is reassuring. Vents are in ample supply. We've been in our surge for two weeks now. I think it's clear that we hit our surge a week before Boston did, and we are starting to believe we're seeing glimmers of hope, and we are starting to feel much better about the fact that we are not gonna have to ration ventilators. So, that's the good news. In terms of our challenges, we've had some major challenges around personal protective equipment, and we've overcome those challenges by deploying UV disinfection of our N95 respirators, and that continues twice a day at both of our campuses. The next challenge that we encountered was with isolation gowns, and we overcame that obstacle by deploying Tyvek suits to our COVID units, whereby the suits can be disinfected in between patients, and they're warned for where, until a patient, until a healthcare worker needs to take a break, or have a meal, or leave for their shift. So, they're in that same Tyvek suit until they doff it, remove it, take a break, and then they put on a clean suit. So, they may go through two to three suits in a shift, but our environmental service personnel have been remarkably responsive to cycling those suits out, cleaning them with a dilution of bleach, and putting them back into circulation. And that has been instrumental in us reducing our personal isolation gown burn rate. In addition to that, we've collaborated with Novartis, who generously loaned us two of their vaporist hydrogen peroxide machines, along with the support to bring in the expertise to utilize those machines to actually sterilize and reuse isolation gowns. So, that was really a tremendous contribution to the organization to help keep our staff safe and to help us restock our gowns. So, we're feeling a little bit more confident about our current supplies, and we have since received some supplies of gowns, and have been fortunate to source some more N95 respirators through a lot of community efforts and through the generosity of a lot of friends and contacts. So, that's been really tremendous. On the ambulatory side, we have a very active respiratory clinic that has been instrumental in evaluating our patients with respiratory diseases who are not necessarily sick enough to have to come to the ED, so it's offloaded the demand on our emergency departments. And they've been having proactive outreach to those patients on a very regular basis, keeping in touch with them to make sure they're stable, and in some cases, have even supplied oxygen at home. So, they've done a very good job at keeping some of our patients recovering at home and out of the hospital. We are also beginning to explore utilizing our alternate care site for some of our patients who cannot sufficiently isolate at home because there's just too many people in their dwelling. Recent experience from China, and I think recent experience that we're seeing in the state, is that contact tracing is important, but what's equally important is a place to isolate infected patients so that they're not, in fact, infecting their household members. A recent study that just came out demonstrated that the household infection rate is about 17%, so I think that's an opportunity for us to do better and try and get patients that are, in fact, infected in a safe isolation area so that they're not infecting their entire family. And other items that I wanna comment on is that we've had tremendous response from our workforce. To see the people on the front line caring for these very sick patients with so much compassion and so much caring has really been extremely rewarding. And a real shout-out to all our healthcare workers who have risen to the occasion, and all the staff who have been working so hard to really take care of the patients and take care of each other, and very appreciative of the collaboration that I've had with Claude. It's been an honor to be on the advisory committee. They were extremely helpful when we were rolling out our protocol for UV disinfection of our N95 respirators, so it's been a great collaboration, and I'm feeling like we are all in a better place today than we were when I first presented to the councilors probably about four to five weeks ago now. Stay well, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Luanne. Nancy, did you, are you ready? Wanna queue up? It might be on mute.
I am, sorry. I'm so used to working from home where my dog will bark 'cause he gets jealous. So, I'm very glad to join you all today, and thank you for your incredible leadership, everyone, in really stepping up very quickly to recognize the needs of our vulnerable, most vulnerable, kinda sisters and brothers. And I know that it's really been a privilege to see everyone working incredibly collaboratively together, and to be part of a partnership where communication, it goes well, there's quick decisions made, there's a lot of collaboration, and a real spirit of both vision and willingness to really go the extra mile on behalf of each other. So, thank you for that. I had commented to Claude at one point, early on in the task force's work, that I felt like I was inducted into the kind of Justice League within the city of Cambridge, and I feel like the commitment around social justice and equity for people, and the care for people who are most vulnerable, has really been demonstrated in a way that's outstanding by all city members, and the city departments, and the leadership across the city. And I'll add to that, that we've had neighbors come by with donations to the field house. I just got a memo that some of the kids from Cambridge, Ringe &amp; Latin, have handmade some masks for our guests and for our staff at the field house, and I don't think it really gets much better than that when a world has to face this kind of crisis. So, you know, first of all, I want you all to know that our first phase in addressing this within our shelter programs, and Beaco does the Caspar 240 Albany Street Shelter, and also has operated the Warming Center, and has joined with the other homeless services and health movement services in the city to really try to plan for, one, how do we de-congregate the shelter services that are operating, and also for those smaller shelters that have been impacted and needed to close early, how do we offer shelter services in a safe way to those individuals as best we can? So, with those kind of two primary missions, it's been helpful to work on that. You know, we did initially reduce the census at our Warming Center from 49 to 35 to just make a little bit more room so that head to toe, people could be six feet apart from each other, and tried to get in enough PPE in the times when PPE was hard to find, to make it as safe as possible. Similarly, within Albany Street at 240, we did reduce our capacity from about 100 to 95 people, but made a lot of efforts to try to figure out how to mitigate contagion. We had a company come in and set up clear vinyl shower curtains between the beds of all the dorms, and we strategized how to have people have meals at different times. And, you know, we were getting donations of PPE from MIT and from some of the providers and our benefactors within the Cambridge community. We set up an isolation room, and frankly, the healthcare for the homeless team here in Cambridge has, two of their staff, Paula and Mark, have, the other, Mark McGovern, have worked with the Albany Street Shelter for 32 years, and so we were really kind of in it trying to make things work, and I think some of those efforts have really moved us forward, I think, to be in a good space. As we prepared for the field house operations, one, what a remarkable place the field house is and the entire War Memorial setup. It's a real gift to some of our guests as they've entered the field house to see this enormous place where there's space, where there's an outdoor space to sit and rest in the sun or in the snow, as we know this past week. And it's really quite a remarkable place, and for many, it may be the nicest place that they've ever been in while homeless. I think that the decision to test prior to people coming in, while it gave us a little bit of a hiccup of a day or two, it's really been a real affirmative commitment to people's wellness and trying to stop the spread of this, and it's been very much welcomed by our guests. At the Warming Center, that was the first site that our testing team of folks came in, and they were remarkable. We had 30 people tested that first night. Of that, there were a few people who refused, and those individuals who refused were predominantly seriously had serious mental illness and were very delusional and paranoid about it. We tried multiple ways to get them to consider, but it didn't work for everybody. But yet, we did have a lot of people get tested, way more than I thought would. Only three people came back with positive results, and two others who were part of the community and had been there the night before, or in the past few weeks. One of our staff had tested positive, but not at that testing site, and another young woman who was five months pregnant tested positive, who'd been part of the community. I think being able to keep the Warming Center open while we waited for test results was really extraordinary, and it wasn't necessarily something that we had all planned for, but people were really remarkably responsive. I've always judged the benefits of working in this is when you have backup and you feel that you can trust people to call them and wake them up in the morning, and being able to call Deputy Superintendent Rob Lowe before 5:00 AM was, since I'd only met him a week before, it felt like a treasure of his welcome response and immediate helpfulness. So, we were able to move the first group of people from the Warming Center on Saturday night, and we moved in 19 people. Some people we couldn't allow in because they had refused testing, and we tried to set up a couple of those people who were open to trying it the next day at Albany Street, went to Albany Street Shelter, and got tested, and a couple of others kind of made their way on their own. So, what a great thing it was to only have three people come back positive. One of those individuals, I think, Claude, do you know if he had showed up, the gentleman, Mr. S?
I do not know as of this afternoon.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't keep track of all of the folks. I'm sorry, I can't keep track of all of the folks, but I think that there was one man who still hadn't appeared that we hoped would. And we've got some community eyes with friends in Boston also looking out for him. At 240, we started, the pro EMS people came, they've been so responsive and flexible, they came Saturday night and early Sunday morning. They tested 101 people. Not one guest at Albany Street Shelter. Of the 85 people who were there, refused. Frankly, the men and women at both the Warming Center and Albany Street have been so grateful. They are very worried about their health and despite the challenges that they have, they want to know, they don't want to get ill, they don't want to spread illness to others. And it was, again, a pleasant surprise that only 13 of those individuals that were tested on Saturday and Sunday night of our guests were positive. And I think only 13 is because we were worried it would be a much higher percentage. And I think of the 13, I don't think any of them were symptomatic. So it's a little hard sometimes to tell with men and women who've lived on the street or in shelters for a long time. They tend to have a lot of respiratory illnesses and sometimes under the influence, if they're under the influence, it's even harder to discern what their health status is. But we're really glad, I believe, that all of the 13 people were successfully transported to one of the sites. I think they were hoping that all could go to the Everett facility and they're in good hands and they were really earnest to go. So we also, that night, had, I think, 16 or so staff tested. All were negative, which was, again, an incredible relief for us because yesterday, within our organization, one of our first employee passed away as a result of COVID-19. And while we've had a couple of people who have died in our agency services and Bay Cove is very, and Caspar are a large organization, you know, losing individuals that we work with every day and our colleagues, it brings us closer to home in a very both sad and frightening way, I think, for many of our employees. So as of, before this meeting started, we had had 14 people from Albany Street moving in. We're moving the 240, half of the 240 Albany Street community is going to go to the Field House. And I think there were 14 that had moved in about an hour ago. We were hoping for 20 to 25 today and 20 to 25 tomorrow to make it easy and to support people along the way. Many people didn't really want to go, they felt very committed to that space. And we've got a great team on the ground. Again, we feel part of a larger, incredible partnership which has been very responsive to the needs of our guests and our community members and also all of our staff. So I think that, you know, I think we're all trying to just kind of appreciate the kind of shared humanity and the goodness that has been shining from so many people and the recognition that we're in this together and we matter to each other and that that will kind of shepherd our way through this. And again, I'm very grateful for the incredible partnership and leadership that you've all brought. I wish that all government could work as quickly and responsibly as you collectively have. It's a remarkable thing to be part of and thank you for each.
So, I guess...
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks again, Luanne. So through Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council, that completes our formal update. And I guess at this point, we can open it up for questions.
So Claude, before we do that, and I know it's been a long presentation, but there's just a couple of things that I wanted to say. I think it's important to recognize that we put this emergency task force to address the most vulnerable population together March 23rd. So in less than a month, this team has been able to produce something that is really the example of what every city should try to do. One of the reasons we were able to do this is because of the talent, the team we have with Pro Ambulance in Bay Cove and our Public Health Department, our Human Services Department, the Cambridge Health Alliance and the Police Department. So we did have an advantage there. We also were in the strong financial position we were in. But while we were doing all of this, we were hoping that the state would also contribute, but we felt we needed to strike first. And since then, having the Everett and Lexington site for the positives have really been a big success. So it's pretty amazing to realize this has all been done in less than one month's time and it's something that, as you can hear from the speakers, how proud they are and that's why I wanted them all to present. But there is one other group that I think we need to recognize, and that is the Cambridge residents who have donated, and I know the mayor wants to thank them as well. Of the $3.5 million, obviously our corporate donors pay a large role in that. But as we did with the Fire Relief Fund when we had the fire in East Cambridge, as we've done with the scholarships every year, when this fund was announced, we've already had over 1,000 Cambridge residents contribute to this fund. And it's just another example why Cambridge is the special place it is. So I know the mayor and myself, and I know all the city council will want to thank, especially our corporate partners, but especially our residents who always come through for us when we need it. And now, I guess, we're ready for questions. Sorry it took so long. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the presentations and, yes, really, everyone who's worked on every aspect of this, thank you so much. The residents who've donated everything from $5 to $1,000, to these bigger corporate donations, every amount makes a true, true difference to the community members who are very, very grateful. So, thank you. So we'll continue in the same fashion we do for most meetings and I'll start in the middle. And I'll start with Counselor Nolan with your questions. And if you have broad questions, that's fine. We did hear presentations from different groups. So if you have a housing question, if you have a human services question, if you have like a more question for the Cambridge Health Department, do direct it to the specific folks who can answer that. And I think that would make it easier. So Counselor Nolan, followed by Counselor Simmons.
Madam Mayor, just a point of information, are we going to help with the comments tonight?
No. Counselor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I really appreciate the thoroughness of this presentation. And there's a few questions I have that are not specifically about the health elements. And so I thought I would make that comment and I don't even need answers now, but it would be good to get them distributed to the public. One was the question about masks, which has come up repeatedly as something that we're advising people to do. I think it would be helpful to communicate with the public something that at least I understand from an advisory from the Attorney General, that our city is doing everything we can to encourage, to advise, to strongly suggest to people and communicate why it is that when they're outside and especially when they're actually in grocery stores, that we cannot mandate wearing them the whole time. So it would just be, I think, important to communicate what our authority and limits are. And we also got notice, we will be sending around the notices by using our trucks in order to, the sound, to advise people of the situation that we're in, which I am totally thrilled about because a month ago, I suggested that we do it. It will be helpful to know what has changed since we decided not to do it in the past and whether this is an increase in the level of urgency that we're feeling, what the message is and what now. It would just be good to understand that. I don't know if those are specific questions. There's a human service question that I'm not sure can be answered now, but with the notice today from the governor that the schools throughout the entire Commonwealth should be closed through the end of the year, we don't yet know whether the advisory will be changed and there will be a slow opening of some of the economy from the governor. But it would be good to know what plans we're making to ensure that if the schools are closed, but there's some additional ability of people to go back to work, how it is that we as a city are ensuring that parents who need the help can get it. For instance, childcare centers are closed. Those are the kind of questions I had. I found the health questions quite thorough and didn't have any specifics about that.
So through you, Madam Mayor, I guess the first one I'll, we'll start with, is about the announcements. One of the things that we've talked about, and thank you, Counselor Nolan, for recommending early on about the trucks going around, is when we do certain things, we want to make sure that people realize the importance. And when we do the reverse 911s, we've done it only three times because there was a concern that if you do it too often, would the message get lost? And we decided to go with that format. And the same thing was almost with the trucks. When would be the right time? When would it say, wow, they've never done this before, this has elevated everything? And clearly, we feel right now, this is the right time. So I want to thank you and that's why we're doing that this week. We're really working hard. Like I said, the Inspection Services Department was our Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday, working with our stores, working with our customers, working with our residents, working with the employees, the store manager. I was out almost every day in the weekend, driving through Dana Heath Park and if there were any issues, staying in contact with Commissioner Bard. We think the message is getting there, but it needs to be elevated even higher right now, more than ever, especially over these next seven to 10 days. So that's one of the reasons why we've decided now to come up and we'll start in certain locations and then we'll spread out and we'll have multiple languages to do it. But it was really, when was the right time? And now we feel like at this moment is the absolute right time. In terms of getting back to reality, it's a great question. Right now, we're still majorly focused on COVID-19 and getting by, but we have had a couple of work groups put together. Metro Mayors has a group, there's a smaller group of mayors and managers as well. We started to put a group of department heads together to talk about, you know, what does it mean to come back, how we would come back. But it's really in the early stages because at this point, I really want not to give the impression that we're trying to get back. I really want to give the impression that right now, the priority is to try to stay at home as possible. Let's get to the best of this. But on the other hand, we will get through this and we want to make sure when it happens, we're ready. So we are in the real early stages of that. But we have three or four groups of people looking at all the type of findings that we're going to have to be aware of when they come up. But it's in the real early stages. But I thank you for those comments because it's important that we take a look at that picture.
Thank you. And I do have one specific health question. It's probably to the, any of the public health officers. Do we have a sense of, there's been some concern expressed about the false negatives. So as the testing we're doing, I know, I'm sure other councillors will have questions about the range of testings, that do we have any sense of whether we have to pay attention to false negatives? I believe at the nursing homes, we actually did two tests in a row, which I think would have helped with that. So just curious about any thoughts on that and what we need to know.
Luanne, did you want to tee it up and then I'll comment about the nursing homes?
Sure. Yeah, so we do know that there is a false negative rate with the nasopharyngeal specimens. And that's why often, two tests separated out by 24 hours are recommended to try and overcome that false negative rate, which could be anywhere from 20 to 30 percent. Honestly, a lot of it has to do with technique. It is, the acquisition of a nasopharyngeal specimen could be something that certain healthcare workers are not accustomed to doing. So there's a skill set that takes some practice and how to insert the nasal swab into the back of the nasopharynx. And it's not painful, but it's uncomfortable for patients. So patients may tend to pull away in the process of acquiring the specimen. So there is certainly an element, a technical element to overcome. And early in the disease, before patients are symptomatic, the test is not as sensitive. So if you test too early, you could also miss that. We know that among our sick patients, once the test is positive, it seems to stay positive for a very long time. And using testing to determine when a patient is no longer infectious is not really a good use of our tests because we are finding that among our hospitalized patients, they are remaining positive three weeks, four weeks out of their original illness. So using testing as a means to determine when someone is no longer infectious is not ideal. And part of that is because you're testing for the nucleic acid of the virus, it doesn't tell you that the virus is still viable. So this is a huge challenge when you're trying to transition patients out from the hospital to a congregate setting because often that setting will require negative testing and it can be very challenging to get that negative testing in a timely timeframe.
Thank you, Luanne.
That was very helpful. Oh, if there's more, that's fine, otherwise I am done.
Okay, got it.
Okay. I'm not sure if Counselor Simmons is on the line. Is she on the line? I don't think she's on the line. So we will move to Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. Counselor?
Thank you. Some of my questions was about if there is a quarantine space for residents who can't quarantine at home because they have, you know, relatives or someone who lives with them with an underlying health condition or is older. Would that also just be the Field House or does a place like that exist? Is it something the city has looked at?
I can take that, this Claude. Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you for the question. So the quarantine space, a reminder, we have 22 cubicles available. The clientele that we've had so far have been homeless individuals. It's not only for homeless individuals, but just know that folks who may be in a space where they can't isolate, we did at least have that defined, a space that we could use. So the six individuals who have been down there have been tested. We use that for the suspect cases until we can rule them out. All six ended up being positive and because the state has those designated regional isolation centers, we've transported those folks out. So for now, it's really primarily for homeless individuals. It's not exclusive to only our homeless residents.
Great, thank you. One of the other questions I had was about reporting of deaths. I'm seeing the city is up to 26 now, but I was having a hard time finding the breakdown by age. I know that there's that reporting for new cases for each day by gender and by age. Is there also that reporting for the deaths? I know the state is doing that reporting, but I hadn't seen it for Cambridge.
Through you, Madam Mayor, so yes, we do have a breakdown by age. We also have it segmented out between the community residents or the nursing home residents because that latter is the largest bolus that's come through. So we do have it broken down by age. Not surprisingly, at least among the nursing home population, we've seen an increase in at least those 60 and over and that's what we've attributed to our rapid testing pilots in those nursing homes. So we do have that breakdown.
Great, thank you. I yield the balance of my time.
No more questions?
No more questions.
Okay. There's some weird feedback happening. If you're not muted, please mute yourselves. Counselor Tumi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to take this moment to thank the manager and the mayor and all those involved in setting up the World Morac complex in such a short period of time. And a special shout out to Pro Ambulance and Broad Institute and Bay Cove and the Cambridge Public Health Commission, Claude Jacobs, Commissioner Bard that's here, and all the staff at the high school, the custodial staff and the maintenance people who assisted in getting that up and operation. And it seems, as the commissioner said, it was a seamless operation and I think that shows exactly the type of personnel that we have here in the city and how fortunate we are to have those personnel. You know, the manager had mentioned, you know, everyone's involvement in this and there's just too many people to thank, but clearly, listening to this presentation, we are doing an incredible job in assisting our residents and keeping them informed, helping them financially, providing food, diapers to those that need them.
diapers to those that need them. And we just have an incredible workforce, and we're just so fortunate from every single employee that has been part of this unfortunate process that we're dealing with. And it just, again, just shows the residents, as you said, contributing. I know there are many volunteers that are out there doing this. I know there's a group actually from MAPS that's providing a weekly meals to Portuguese speaking individuals that can't get out. And this just shows, and there's so many incidents like that that are happening, that people are really pulling together and trying to assist one another. One of the big concerns, and I think we've all seen lately, clearly, a lot of emails from older residents who are really concerned about mandatory face masks, and they just feel really unsafe in a threatening way with this. And it's something I think Councilor Govern is going to submit a policy order, I'm going to sign on to it, asking for that mandatory mask covering. I'm just astounded at how many people are just not adhering to that. And what really, like I said, I walk the river every day. It's 80% of the runners and bikers are just not wearing masks. They're not wearing them. So if you're a senior that wants to walk the river, you really feel threatened by that. And I just think it's so unfortunate that people are not adhering to that. And I understand it might be uncomfortable, but if you're coming up to people, at least put it on. But they're not even, there's no mask on their body that they can just put up if they're coming into contact with individuals. And I just, I don't know how else to get the message out there, that this is serious. And it's, you know, the seniors that also need to get out there and walk and recreate and get their exercise. And I really feel that that's putting them at a disadvantage, and it's very unfortunate. But again, I just want to thank everyone for their participation and what they're doing for us. The mayor and the city manager, and my colleagues that are doing a lot on helping their neighbors and friends and volunteering, and I think that's fantastic. So with that, I do want to mention and thank a city clerk who's only been here a couple of months, and has been quite a veteran now, you know, and Naomi Stever, the council assistants for their work in keeping the council up to date and informed. They're doing a tremendous job. So that's all I have at this time. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Toomey. Counselor Zandervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, my thanks to everyone as well for giving us this update and answering our questions. I want to start with the emergency shelter. And I appreciate all the effort that went into that, but I remain concerned about the way that unfolded, and particularly, the testing that was done Thursday evening, when people were able to leave the shelter, the warming center, on Friday. And so if they were tested on Thursday, but they were able to leave on Friday, then how can we attach any value to those test results if they could have acquired the virus in between? So could you say a little bit more about exactly what happened there? And also, I'd appreciate if we could get exact numbers. I heard earlier that Mr. Jacobs said that we have the breakdown for people who died based on age, but that's not available on the data portal. And also, we don't have exact numbers of how many people have been tested in general, how many people have been tested at the shelters, how many people are tested at the nursing homes. So it would be helpful if we could get that information on a regular basis as well.
Okay, this is Claude. Through you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Zandervan, for the question. So I heard two questions. One about the pre-screening program over at the warming center, and I'm not sure if I caught the second que, oh, testing numbers. So, oh, the reason that we had the folks, we'll just say flat out, the only difference between our shelter population and any of us on this call is that we may have the luxury of going to our provider, going to the ED, going to a drive-through, testing modality, and then going home. So let's be clear that this was intended to be a way for us to have a better insight about those who may be asymptomatic and may test positive. So in my opinion, the 29 folks who tested over at the warming center, and the three individuals that we found to be positive, that it served its purpose. This is not an experiment, and I, we didn't, I didn't approach this, nor did the other partners, as something where it's more of a camp. This is a group that has rights. We did make it a requirement for admission to the field house, still a requirement. This is the pre-screening to do the rapid tests with the broad and with the pro. So just acknowledging the complexities there. Keep in mind that the protocol is still in play for symptom check at the field house in addition to having a daily clinic staffed by the healthcare for the homeless staff, just to make sure that we're monitoring effectively. So I'm not sure if it's a question as to our rationale for not keeping them at the warming center, if that's the question, or just the process in general for folks to gain admission to that physical space over at the War Memorial. So let me pause there before I comment about the reporting out of the numbers, just to make sure that I've got, that I've answered your question.
Counselor?
Thank you. I do appreciate that. I'm a little bit confused by your answer. I understand that the rest of us get to go home, but that's exactly the point, that we're putting people in a co-housing facility in the field house, and so we are trying to ascertain that they have the virus or not, so that they are safe from infection. And these concerns are not coming from me, these are coming from that community itself. So I don't quite understand. And you said it is an entry requirement for admissions to the field house. So if that's the case, how can we say that people can be tested and then they can leave? They're not going home, or they can safely isolate, they're on the street where they are more exposed than everyone else to potential infections? So I don't quite understand the answer.
Can I have Commissioner Abad follow up with that, please?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Zandervan, one of the things I want to stress is that while these asymptomatic individuals consented to be tested, what they did not do is give up any of their civil liberties. I went and got tested last week, and I was free to roam until my results came back. And the only difference between me and these individuals is that I have a home and they don't. So one of the things that our ability to hold them to, in effect, create an internment situation, we didn't have that ability, nor is that the protocol for asymptomatic individuals. So that's the protocol, and that's how things go. They were free to roam until such time as a positive result came back, and more stringent action had to be taken.
Claude, did you have anything to add?
I want to be clear, because I feel like I'm being misunderstood here. I'm not suggesting that people should be detained. I'm saying that they don't have a safe place to shelter. And in fact, it's my understanding that on Friday, or rather, on Saturday, the warming center was kept open so that they could remain there while they awaited their test results. So I'm not asking why you didn't detain people. I'm asking if we are providing shelter for people while they await their test results, making sure that they're safe. Of course, if they leave, that is their choice, but then they can't show up the next day and be admitted to the field house. I don't believe that's your plan. So I'm just trying to understand what exactly is the protocol here, and how are we making sure that people are safe?
This is Nancy Mahan, and you know, I appreciate your question a lot, sir. I think that one of the reasons why we worked hard to keep the, you know, the warming center only operates at night, and frankly, I'm not sure that we could have gotten staff that quickly for the next day. It was hard to get it for the next night, because it was scheduled to close on the 15th. The reason why I felt it was really important to keep it open on Saturday was because when I, it was snowing, it was icy and very wet, and I was frankly more concerned about the conditions for frostbite for the men and women at the shelter, at the warming center on Saturday day. There's really no place for people to go. You know, you can't sit and have a cup of coffee anywhere. Many of the businesses are closed, none of the stores are, you know, many of the, you know, kind of other places like the library or anyplace, any of the other service centers are closed. So it was really Saturday. I think it was the snowstorm and the wetness. The risk for them was frankly as worrisome to me as COVID-19 with respect to that. So, but I can understand your question, and thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I did want to get to this Claude again. Apologies. I did want to answer the second question about testing. I think, Counselor Zandervan, you were looking for more data to be released. We do report on the aggregate. We do have access to a breakdown, community residents versus nursing home population. It is not our plan right now to report out about the number of folks tested at the area shelters, but I can take this back to the team. So that I can tell you, that's our plan right now. We do want to make sure that you're aware of the activity in the shelters. When it comes to the aggregate counts and the number of fatalities, we're trying to make sure to report that daily in real time.
Counselor?
Thank you. I do appreciate that, and I know it's challenging to publish this data, but it would be helpful to share as much of that with the public as we possibly can. And similarly, around these protocols for how we are testing and in taking folks who are experiencing homelessness during this crisis, because we are left to guess. And we talk to people who are in that community and hear from them what's happening, but we're not hearing from you all what is happening, what the plan is, how we're going, what to do moving forward. So I would really appreciate a lot more information going forward as to how we are keeping everyone safe in this very vulnerable population. I have more questions about how we're admitting people to the field house, including people who are not at the warming center or Albany Street. How are we making sure that we're reaching everyone we can to make them aware that this shelter is available to them? And how are we going to test them again, if they do want to partake of that opportunity for shelter?
Who would like to jump in on that?
Sorry, this is Claude, I was on mute, apologies. So you're speaking to the field house operations. I'm going to defer to Nancy to talk through, again, the complement of our protocol. So there is the pre-screening. We are trying to rule out the negatives or allow them admission to the field house operation. And in the field house, we already have a team through the Healthcare for the Homeless Program that conducts a daily clinic, just to make sure that we can monitor folks. And I'll have Nancy talk a little bit more about symptom checks and what they do at the door.
Yep, sorry, I was on mute as well. You know, we have implemented since the first night that whenever, you know, the field house is, again, it's a voluntary place for people to come and to stay. But people can go out into the community. We have a nice space that's contiguous to the building, where part of the tennis courts are, that's really been set up as a nice area for people to both eat if the weather's good, and to sit outside, and for those who smoke, a safe place to smoke and not be wandering in the neighborhood with that. I think that, I think, you know, one of the things that's actually a consideration for many of these individuals and wary is that they may indeed be more vulnerable to our employees coming in than to the connections they have outside, or equally as vulnerable, because it's usually, in many places, the employees who are kind of carrying the virus without knowing and spreading this virus. So I think that, you know, the warming center is a little bit more active group, because many of those individuals have lived on the street as well. But the Albany Street population tends to, you know, they're older, and many of them are a little bit more frail and ill. We're keeping the more older and frail people at Albany Street. We're trying to make sure that those at Albany Street, even if they test negative, are gonna stay there, because we've got a good dozen people who have very, very advanced alcoholism. And we don't want people kind of roaming in that. They would get lost if they went to the field house, and they're better to be taken care of in that setting. You know, we are asking people about symptoms at the doorway, and we are taking people's temperatures. In the event that anybody indicates that they have any symptom relative to COVID-19, and we're going through the list of everything from a cough to feeling much weaker, to having not just shortness of breath, but really having more difficulty breathing, to having diarrhea, vomiting. Also, we're looking at people's eyes to see if anybody has pink eye. If anybody reports that, we have a separate place for people to sit. Unfortunately, the tent blew away today, but we'll get another one up tomorrow. And wait, and then we will call Pro EMS to, we won't let people come back into the shelter if they do evidence any symptoms, which doesn't screen for those who, you know, are asymptomatic, obviously, but for anybody who is presenting with any symptoms at all, so that they will go. And Pro EMS will take them to one of the testing sites to be screened, and then they'll go into quarantine from there. That's one way we are looking to make sure that we're doing everything possible to assist people in getting the care they need and to try to mitigate the spread of this. But again, you know, I think that, much like the commissioner said, people don't have a home to go to. That's accurate. But they do have, you know, the kind of civil liberties as all of us do, to take a walk or to go out and buy a cup of coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. And so we're trying to encourage people to stay in as much as possible. Again, it's very comfortable at the field house so far, and I think that we've seen more people relaxing there, and that's been helpful.
Thanks. And again, I do appreciate all the efforts that are being made, but it doesn't add up for me. I don't understand how we think we can keep people safe in this way. And given that people who test positive are now sent to hotel rooms where they can And given that people who test positive are now sent to hotel rooms where they can safely isolate, it seems obvious to me that that's the right answer also for people who test negative because that exactly puts them in a more similar situation to everybody else where they can come and go as they please and they can safely isolate in a hotel room. And of course, I'm fully aware that some people need much more attention and treatment than, than can be provided to them in a hotel room. And I, I have full faith and trust in all of your abilities to provide that treatment to them. But again, it seems obvious to me that the, the right solution here is to get as many people as we possibly can into hotel rooms or other space where they can safely isolate and be protected and not to wait for them to test positive before, before we do that. And I'll move on to, to this question of, of masks. There's, there's quite a lot of confusion out there about the extent to which we can require people to wear masks and the extent to which we can require businesses to require people to wear masks. And I think there needs to be a lot more clarity around that. And, and our communication certainly can be much more stringent and clear to say that it is a requirement to wear a mask. And, you know, if there's constitutional issues or, you know, it, it obviously doesn't make sense for us to go around giving lots of people tickets for not wearing a mask, but that doesn't prevent us from saying that it is required and it doesn't prevent businesses from requiring it with, with our support. So I really encourage us to make, to be more clear about that. And I want to ask-
Counselor? Counselor?
Yeah?
So I'm going to have to come back to you. We'll have to do a motion to extend. We have Counselor Carlon, Vice Mayor Malin, McGovern, most folks. Yes, I didn't say you have, you get two questions each, but you know, you've, I think, you know, I want to be fair to your other colleagues as well. So just, you know, let me just look at, it's 5:59 now. I am sure we'll have to do a motion in about five minutes. So I'm going to go to Counselor Carlon for the time, time being. Counselor Carlon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to first say that I was quite impressed by all the staff and their updates. Not just only for the information of what is being done, but the clear compassion that was in all their presentations. I'm sure we all feel that way. Also, I wanted to pick up on what Counselor Zondervan has said and Counselor McGovern has proposed on masks. I mean, it's, I could joke and say it's not like we have a pandemic. Oh, we do have a pandemic. This is about as unusual as it can get. And, um, and Counselor Toomey said it as well, now that I'm thinking about it. I totally agree. We have to be much stronger about this. But to my few questions that I wanted to ask, as I understood the presentation, it appears that we might have reached, and I emphasize the word appears, that we might have reached the top of the surge. We don't know for sure. Certainly there could be a second surge. Is that correct?
Um, this is-
Go ahead, Luanne.
Yeah, Dr. Bruno, yeah. I think that we're starting to feel that way. I think in the state, there's been at least three days now, the total number of cases have gone down. Of course, there's still a lot of patients in the hospital and there's still, we're still realizing too many deaths, but I think we're starting to see a glimmer of hope. And I think it has a lot to do with the social distancing and I think that's going to still be important as we go forward. So we're optimistic. Of course, things can change. Testing is still being ramped up, so we may actually start seeing cases go up again and we shouldn't take, necessarily take that to indicate that we, the surge is not over. So that's something we have to keep in mind. We're ramping up testing. So I, I'm hopeful that we have reached our peak, at least in Cambridge. But, you know, we have to be, we have to be cautious and there could be a quick change to actually see, realizing an increase in cases if there is a lot of social intermingling as the weather warms. So we're optimistic, we're cautiously optimistic, I would say. And I'd welcome other people's interpretation of the modeling that they're seeing as well.
This quad, through you, Madam Mayor, and thanks Counselor Carlon for that question. I, I would just say, and I'll just reiterate something that one of our, a member of our expert advisory panel has shared, and you may have seen this publicized. So it's not just that we're looking at a peak or an apex in terms of the metaphor of a mountain, but just think about the mountain range. So there are peaks and valleys and I would just remind us all that there are still unknowns. We now have more data recognizing the, that asymptomatic transmission is, is a reality. Clearly, we're seeing activity out and about. And so I would just caution us while we are paying attention to the impact to the hospital community further downstream, I would just say that from where I'm sitting, it's just as important to remind folks to, to stay at home. It's just as important to remind folks about the importance of social distancing. It's just as important to remind folks that now we're talking about mask up. I mean, so I would just say that we shouldn't take our foot off the, the gas pedal, but I am reminded by at least a, a member of our expert advisory panel that while we're thinking about one peak and then a downward trend, that there may be peaks and, and valleys across time. So we'll see what next week brings, we'll see what the following week brings. And I can tell you that even our case count here in the city, you know, up until 10 days ago, we had half this figure and we can say with some confidence that the uptick has been attributed directly to the testing that we've done in area nursing homes. And now you'll see at least the contributions of what we're seeing in the homeless shelters. So just wanted to add that commentary tied to what we're seeing on the ground, whether it's within the hospital community or just what we're seeing out in the community writ large.
And just to follow up on the testing, will we, I assume we'll continue expanding the testing as we can over time, no matter what the numbers are, just to have a better understanding of this?
Yes, there's a lot of interest in expanding testing. We, we still have challenges with sourcing all the materials.
Sure.
But there is a lot of interest in doing that.
Well, thank you both. And my second area that I wanted to look at is a different area. It has to do with the mayor's fund. As I calculate, it's approximately a thousand to $1,500 per application. And I, I heard that 661 applications have been received or been reviewed?
Through you, Madam Mayor. There have been 660, there are currently pending 661. And that means either that someone has started an intake on the telephone with an applicant and the applicant may be looking for documents that they're then going to call back and continue to complete the application, or there may be applications that have been submitted fully online and our reviewers are going back and forth with the applicants. So those 661 are in addition to the ones that have already been approved.
Very, very good. So my question, and this is my last question, is am I correct to assume that this isn't just a one month thing, that if you get money for this month, you can reapply next month when the bills come in next month? Is that true?
That's a great question, Counselor Carlon, and I can't give you the answer because we don't know that answer yet. What I would say is that we set up the rules that are the basis for the giving out of these funds and we made it clear that these are the funds that we're giving out at this time. And so the question of how long the funds last and what we're able to do with them might lead us to another round, but we have not yet made that determination.
Okay. Well, I'll just say that this isn't going to be over in one payment period. It's going to be three or four payment periods. And as I said before, I hope we can supplement the amount of money if needed. Thank you all. That was great to hear. Bye-bye.
So before we move on to Vice Mayor Malin, Counselor McGovern, on a motion by Counselor Toomey to extend the meeting by, let's say, 15 minutes, roll call?
On the motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons absent. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, none against, and one absent.
We'll now go on to Vice Mayor Malin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I just wanted to thank you and the city manager and staff and team and for everybody on the call today for holding this meeting. I think it was really critical to hear about how our homeless shelters, our healthcare system and our city hospitals are handling the surge right now and to get a really, this is a very comprehensive update, you know, on the public health side, but also on the many various city items that are happening right now. And I think it was really important for both the residents and for us to hear. So I'll be brief because I know that we've been here for a long time. But to Nancy Mahan and the entire Bay Cove team, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the tremendous effort that you put in this weekend and for testing all of our, all of our shelter guests, both at the warming center and at 240 Albany Street so that, you know, those folks who wanted to move over to the War Memorial could do so safely. I was thinking, as you were saying, how many had tested positive, that it seems to me it's around 10%, both at the warming center and at 240 Albany Street, which is a strikingly lower number than what we are seeing both in Boston and nationwide. And I feel like we've seen as high as 30% as a testing. So 10% to me, and it sounds like during your comments was something that you were relieved about as well. So I don't think that happens by accident. I think that that happens because your team was probably tremendously on top of, you know, what we needed to do in terms of sanitizing, keeping shelter guests safe. So I just want to commend you and your team for keeping that rate of infection very low. And so thank you for that. I just have one question for Nancy and her team. I knew that we're hoping to move a total of about 50 shelter guests to the War Memorial and it looks like 14 moved last night. Is there a target date to getting that done? Will it be done this week?
Nancy, you might be on mute.
Oh, I am. Thank you for, for your feedback and I'll be glad to share your, your, um, your praise and compliments to our team. They, they have done an extraordinary bit of work and, you know, and I'd like to say that, you know, our efforts have been the things that have made this helpful. I, I expect to some extent they have. I, I don't know exactly else how to, um, I don't know how to understand the lower rates and other than some of that, I'm not sure what's quite different here than, than in other homeless, other communities where homelessness is, is apparent and, and a concern. At the same time, I think that getting-
Denise Simmons.
We have 14 people moved today. So, um, and I expect that by the end of the day, there will be about 20. We're trying to move people, we have two vans that are bringing people one at a time with their belongings and we're trying to do it in that way. One, uh, you know, everybody who's, who's negative is still at risk. And we're wanting to really emphasize that with all of our guests and all of our staff, that the need for social distancing and the need for safety in all of our practices to protect each other is, is still a considerable thing. We're also doing it one by one because we're trying to provide people with support. This is a big deal to move and, you know, the Albany, but I think people will be really delighted when they get to the, to the, um, field house. But it is a big change and like most of us humans, some of us, just it's overwhelming to have changes. And, uh, and so people have really felt anchored and supported at Albany Street. So I, I, I hope that we're done tomorrow, actually, with that. That's our plan. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nancy, for that. And I, change is hard. It's hard for all of us. And so I know that this is a tremendous effort to move shelter residents over to the War Memorial into an unknown situation. I do want to say that in terms of your, your staff and what they did to ready themselves for the virus, when I volunteered for the first deputy in the outreach van in mid-February, going to 240 Albany Street was, there was amazingly different entry situation, getting in, hand sanitizer, not touching the, the door handles or, or buttons. There was, uh, there was, you could tell that you guys were readying for this in a way that a lot of other places weren't. So I think that is a testament to your staff, so please share that with them.
I will.
My next question-
You're welcome.
Uh, my next question is for Claude. Staying on the homeless shelter guests and testing, did you mention that the Salvation Army shelter guests now are going to be tested via the same testing regimen with the road?
Through you, Madam Mayor, and thanks Vice Mayor for that question. So just to clarify, while we talked about the pre-screening program and just so you have the data, so we had a 12% positivity rate at the warming center. We had a 13% positivity rate assigned to the Albany Street site. The Salvation Army, while we were getting ready for the transition to the field house, our public health nurses were in the midst of a, of an outbreak at the Salvation Army. And so on a dime, we had to pivot and get a better sense of what that was looking like. So we did deploy last Friday night a team to test the folks at that site. And just apples to apples, we found that the positivity rate at that site was 48%. So I just want to make sure that you understand that although this is not intended to be the pre-screening program to come to the field house, we were trying to apply the tools in real time while we were testing folks at the warming center. We turned around to make sure that we could put out the brush fire assigned to the Salvation Army. And I know there's talk out there about universal testing and pushing this out. Just know that that is in our line of sight. We are trying to at least get through this transition with the team, the cohorts going to the field house with an eye to figure out, you know, what's the best way that we can test across the homeless shelter community. So just to answer that question.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, Mr. Jacobs. So the, the 48%, that is an alarming number, but it's more in line with, I think, what we're seeing. Those, those shelter guests are now at the hotels that the state has procured in Everett and Lexington?
Yeah, so the, we put in a request through Madam Mayor, so to Vice Mayor, we did put in a request. I know that they were in queue. I can't confirm if they physically already left that site, but we've been pretty successful with getting, for those of you that don't know, the regional isolation centers, our staff through Secretary Sutter's office. And so it is a collaboration. There are medical staff, there's the Massachusetts Emergency Management Association, MEMA. They have security, meals, cleaning crew. So the hotel in Everett or the hotel in Lexington, that's where they would be transported to. And these are all COVID-positive homeless individuals.
Thank you. And just one more question through you, Madam Mayor. So 48% tested positive on Friday. It's Tuesday. They're still in queue for- It's Tuesday. They're still in queue for the hotel. Are they, these shelter guests that tested positive, are they at the quarantine center in, at the War Memorial? Or are they still at the Salvation Army with the other fifty-two percent residents that did not test positive?
Yeah, through Madam Mayor, the Salvation Army crew is gone already. So, just know that. I was referring to the folks at 240 Albany Street, because we put in a request since we got that data last night. So, we do have one individual who has been in quarantine from the Salvation Army that was retested on Sunday. But just know that the Salvation Army cohort, those positives, have already been forwarded to the Everett Hotel.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And then, my last question for Mr. Jacobs is, you know, on the racial data, I know you mentioned that it remains a conundrum, and that you're ready to push out that data on race and ethnicity, and it is going to be incomplete. Do you have a sense of when that will be available on the website?
Yeah, through Madam Mayor. So, I do believe, if I, I don't want to speak out of turn, my team is ready to make that available. We did want to make sure that you were aware, that we've been working on this probably the last couple of weeks since my last presentation. Our challenge is that because it is incomplete, we were sort of stuck as to whether or not we should just put it out there or try to make sure that we cleaned it up to the best of our ability. So, it's not just a challenge with us, but we're also working with the state data set just to make sure that we are painting as accurate of a picture. So, sometime this week. Let me just say it that way.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And thanks to everybody again for your presentation. This has been incredibly insightful and helpful. And I think, I know Counselor Carlon mentioned it, but I did feel a little glimmer of hope that we might be in a really good place mid-surge. And that is, that's a true testament to everybody who's on this call and working so hard. Thank you.
Counselor McGovern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your leadership. And I enjoyed your book reading the other day. That was cool. And thanks to everybody else for all the hard work that they're doing. Let me just briefly, sort of, there's been a lot of talk about the masks and what a policy order I might be filing or am filing or what have you. So, let me just kind of touch on that real quick. I was going to put in a policy order last week, asking the city manager to look at making, wearing masks outside as well as in stores, grocery stores and drugstores or what have you, mandatory. Pretty soon after I had that conversation with the manager, the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts came out with a whole list of things of what cities can and can't do. One of those things on that list was around mandating masks. And at that time, the AG's office said cities and towns do not have the authority to mandate...
Denise Simmons.
I had, I had a follow-up conversation with the AG's office later last week. They had gone, there was some confusion there. They told me that that position has changed and that it, because of it being a public health emergency, that cities and towns can mandate people wear masks. So, I haven't... I haven't seen that in writing. They're going to put it out in writing to cities and towns, but that's, they have confirmed that with me verbally. So, I have a policy order in for next Monday, asking the manager to look at this. It is, like everything else, more complicated, right? How do you enforce it? I mean, do we want, you know, our police department to get two hundred phone calls or a hundred phone calls from somebody saying, hey, there's somebody on Franklin Street not wearing a mask? And then, what do they do with that information? You know, chase the person down? What happens when they find them? Is there a ticket involved, a warning? If we're going to mandate masks, how do we ensure everybody has them? How do we do the outreach? So, there's a lot that goes into this, so it's not as simple as saying, yes, do it or no, don't. So, the order coming in on Monday is asking the manager to work with his folks to look at this issue and come back with recommendations. So, that's where that stands. I would just say, you know, as far as the shelter goes and the testing, I completely hear what Counselor Zandervan is saying, and I'm frustrated as well. But I'm frustrated across the board, right? So, if I go for a test at the CHA, there is no guarantee that I am going to go straight home and isolate. I may stop at the supermarket to pick up some milk. I may go to the drugstore. I may go for a walk, whatever. I have that, there's, the results do not come back fast enough to ensure that people will self-isolate while they await their results. Some will, some won't. Unhoused folks are the same way. They're going to get tested. We can't say, we're going to force you to stay in this room until we get your test results back, right? We can't say that to anybody, and we're not going to say it to them. What I wish we were focusing on is how do we, what is the status, and maybe, I don't know if Claude has any knowledge of this on the national scene, in terms of getting more tests and getting tests that are, where we get the results much faster. I mean, that's the issue. If we got results in fifteen minutes or thirty minutes, you could test somebody and isolate them until you wait for the results. As far as I know, that's not out there yet. So, I guess, the question to Claude is, is that coming? What have you heard in the field?
Yeah, I can chime in. Through Madam Mayor, thanks, thank you, Counselor McGovern, for that question. So, the rapid pilot, that is something that, because of the limited availability of testing kits, we really depended on our partners at the Broad Institute to support us, plus the brawn, the labor, the staff deployed by the ambulance service, Pro EMS. I am aware anecdotally that there is a product coming online. I have not had a chance to research this. You asked about what's out and about in terms of opportunities. There is a quicker test. I haven't seen it, which is why I hesitate to even talk about it, but it is something on the order of fifteen to thirty minutes. I do want to research that and figure out if that's an option for us to append to this operation. I'll defer to Dr. Luanne Bruin-Murtha in terms of testing capabilities and speed, but we are researching this just to figure out if there's a faster way for us to do this. Luanne, did you want to comment?
Yes, yeah, so, there are faster tests available, but sourcing the supplies has been a challenge. At Cambridge Hel lines, we actually have a rapid test that we deployed just about two weeks ago. And after one week, we were completely out of the kits and had to go a couple of days without having the rapid turnaround. And we just received another supply of those kits, which I'm not sure how long it's going to last us. It's really great having that rapid turnaround, but it's still a supply issue. And there are some other rapid tests that have been approved, but the kits are not yet readily available.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Madam Mayor, just my last question, and then unfortunately, I'm going to have to step off the call.
Counselor?
Yeah?
Six fourteen. So, I need a motion to extend so that you can finish up your question, and then we have Counselor Simmons on the line.
Okay. Move to extend for fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes, so, we're going to have a cut, fifteen minutes. So, let's do a roll call, Mr. Kirk.
On the motion to extend the meeting till six thirty, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, my last question, and again, I'm sorry I have to step off. And I think this was sort of lost on me a little bit, and I know you guys, Mr. Manager and others, had said this before, and I think it kind of, I lost it a little bit. The purpose of the War Memorial was really to deal with some of the overflow and space issues from the Warming Center, Albany Street, the Lutheran program, some of the shelters, the Salvation Army, the shelters that are already in existence in Cambridge. But undoubtedly, and I understand that was the first phase and the second phase, I wanted to ask, what are we going to do with, I mean, there are a lot of folks who weren't part of those shelters, right, for a whole host of reasons and weren't there when the testing took place? So, are we thinking about, and would we be moving towards at some point, you know, what happens if I'm unhoused and I show up at the War Memorial? I haven't been to Albany Street. I wasn't at the Warming Center. And I'm just coming in fresh and say, hey, I need shelter. I want to be here. Is there any capacity to, for those folks, or is that something we haven't tackled yet?
Claude, you want to answer that? I know we've been talking about it. It's all coming over to Claude.
Yeah, just again, and I'll tee it up, and I'll defer to Nancy to weigh in. So, to zoom out, through Madam Mayor, to Counselor McGovern, the purpose of the Field House operations in particular was to decompress, decongregate the area shelters. So, there is a tipping point. Right now, the focus has been about moving two, possibly three cohorts to that site. So, the Warming Center, that's already moved forward. You already heard that the 240 Albany Street site, at least about half that group, to move forward. There has been a question about the Harvard Square, that grouping. So, I would just acknowledge that the whole point of this was to make sure that we had adequate space and adequate physical space to support our homeless population. So, let me stop there and just say that I do feel that what we've done over the course of the past week, to not only activate the quarantine quarters, to pull out the potentially positive individuals, which we've done, we're six for six in terms of the folks that have been admitted to that lower level and then transferred out. And now, the complement with the second phase of having the Field House operations and all that goes with it, with the Bay Cove staff, just underscoring that the primary objective of that space was literally to decompress, decongregate the area shelters. But I'll ask Nancy to weigh in in terms of how to message that or to comment on behalf of the broader shelter community.
Actually, yes, yeah. Thank you, Counselor McGovern. I think that one of the things that we worked hard with Health and Human Services and specifically with Liz Menjers, who oversees the continuum of care and the homeless services prioritizations within the city and CCAN, we looked, you know, the population of men and women who come into a place like Albany Street and the Warming Center, you know, there's a kind of core group that has been there for, with some consistency. And then, there's others who, you know, come and go at different times, and some people who just spend a night or two. I think that at the Warming Center, over the past three or four months, there's probably been three hundred different individuals. I'm guesstimating because I'm not good at remembering the exact numbers. And, you know, in any given year, we do serve a thousand different individuals at Albany Street Shelter. What we were looking to do, and I was really leaning in with Liz and others in the city to assist us with, is how do I, how do we work to, one, accomplish the decongregation and, two, to serve those individuals who have lost shelter? So, for example, those within the Harvard Square Shelter, I think Y2Y is, you know, they had to go down two or three beds. And I think they're doing their very best to keep their operations going. And we're hoping that they can continue to do that. But in the event that they, that they can't, if that was to happen, that we would have room for them. One of the things that we've been really looking at is to figure out, who are those individuals who have stayed within those services that really are, kind of have strong ties within the community? Are they, you know, did they grow up here? Or have they been within the Cambridge homeless services system for many years or many, many months? Are they registered within the CCAN system for housing? Are they, are they working here in Cambridge, et cetera? And I know that Liz and her staff have done a lot of looking at the HMIS data for the last, both the last two months and I think then the last four months, to try to activate a list of people that are eligible per our goals and mission, you know, to really attend to those individuals who are from or living in the community or living on the street now, and also having restrictions, because we will get a swarm of people coming from other communities. And we, this was not set up to deal with regional and needs of people who are experiencing homelessness now. And we must kind of protect the integrity of the safe space for those prioritized people. You know, I think that we know that our First Step staff are still out seven days a week. There was a little bit of a disruption with that when we had a couple of staff ill and needing to isolate while they were waiting for test results. And, but they're going out seven nights a week and seeing, I think, four to five hours to check in with people and to give meals. If any of those individuals are interested in wanting to come in, I mean, it's unlikely for many of them, but we want to make sure that there's room for those people should they need to come in. And they need to go through the testing protocol, obviously, and be negative. And similarly, I think that there's, people are going to try to outreach to those individuals from the Harvard Square Shelter. And one of the small women shelters in Somerville that was actually part of the Cambridge continuum and was located in Cambridge years ago. So, there is an effort to look to be open to that as long as we can, really be true to the spirit of the vision of this project, really to optimize safety and health for everybody in the homelessness services community that really is connected with the Cambridge community. So, we have been preparing our staff, and Liz has, you know, generated lists of those who we deem eligible, to be able to say no to people. I mean, I had somebody approach the other day from Wellfam, who had heard there was a good gig coming on in Cambridge. And he said he grew up there, and he said, you know, he'd gone to Cambridge Ringe and Latin. And, you know, I asked if he could find some ways to verify that, that that was, if that was accurate, then he could be, you know, considered. And I would put in a review for that with Liz and others. But he quickly withdrew and said, he didn't say it wasn't true, but I think he suggested it wasn't really accurate, what he was saying. So, you know, I think, does that make sense to you in that? I'm kind of mumbling. I'm sorry. So, I think that's what we're looking at. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I understand. Thank you for that, for that explanation. I'm going to step off, but I do want to say quickly, Madam Mayor, that I know that, you know, there's been some stuff in the press and some folks concerned about why the opening of the War Memorial took a couple extra days than what was originally planned. And I just, you know, I just want to say, you know, despite the fact that there's a lot of moving parts and things get delayed for a whole host of reasons, one of the reasons, and this was mentioned earlier, was that the decision, the decision was made to start to test people before they went into the War Memorial. That was something that folks on the council had asked to be done. I think there's some concerns about maybe, you know, those folks staying together, but the delay was not, I just think it's important because people are working incredibly hard, and we have a lot of great experts that are eating and drinking this every single night. And it's easy on the sidelines to be the armchair quarterback. But, you know, the delay was because we wanted to make sure people were tested beforehand. And I think, I wish that would get out in the newspaper, rather than trying to say it was some negligence.
All right. Sorry, I got to cut you off. Thank you so much. Next, Cambridge, not Cambridge, Simmons, Counselor Simmons, I know you texted me and you have one question.
Thank you, Mayor. My apologies for coming late, and I'll try to get as much update from the city manager later. Just very quickly, what I did hear, I'm glad to hear from Mr. Jacob that we're going to be getting the information on the Black and Brown communities. And I know he wants to be as accurate as possible, but there are those of us that are anxious to get that information. Let us know what the flaws are so that we can start to do proper outreach to communities on how to keep... so that we can start to do proper outreach to communities on how to keep, and that kind of thing. So I know he, he wants to do as best a job as he can in terms of identifying, uh, the individuals or, or the target groups, but it's also important to get that out as soon as possible so that we can react and act on it. Excuse me. The second thing I wanted to say, uh, just today, I was informed about four people, senior citizens that, that passed. And one of those seniors were living in a nursing home sort of environment. And I guess my concern, this is to Claude, Jacob, is, is twofold. Is there something that we can do? We, we've done an extraordinary job, or we're doing extraordinary job when it comes to reaching out to the homeless population, but I really do worry about the senior population. I apologize in advance if you've already spoken about this. I'm just interested about two things. One, what are we doing to keep the seniors safe? And specific to, and I know we don't own or operate Sancta Maria directly, there are still healthy seniors, excuse me, in these sites. And I don't, I'm beginning to wonder, and I've gotten calls of concern, that they're not getting proper care because so much attention has been going to those seniors that may be sick. And so if you could speak a little bit to what we're going to try to do to keep the seniors that are healthy, healthy? And is there any way to isolate those two groups?
Claude?
Sure. Through you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Counselor Simmons, for the question. Uh, if I understand correctly, are you referring to the seniors in the nursing homes? Are you talking about seniors who are in their homes? I just want to make sure I understand what you're speaking?
In nursing homes. Right now, I'm talking about seniors in nursing homes.
Right. Okay, understood. So, um, I, I did present earlier just to talk about our rapid testing pilot project and the complement with the Cambridge COVID Task Force to support the seven facilities, um, where we do have clearly a large subset of seniors in those buildings. Um, we are focusing on making sure that we pay attention to positivity rates among the nursing home residents and staff. Um, in terms of anything else that we could do to, with the seniors, clearly we can work with the administrators, but, but I'm not aware of any other initiative anchored to the nursing homes. Um, and I would, uh, probably defer to our partners at the Council on Aging, um, for anything else that we could message differently. Those seniors, just know that each facility, what we've learned over the last 10 days, uh, each facility is different. Uh, each has a different organizational culture, different needs, different constraints. Uh, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to cater and support each one of those on the ground. So we are intentional in connecting to our, our elderly populations. Just know that, uh, this was by design to go and get as early of a sense as possible of what was happening in these facilities. Uh, we learned a lot in the last 10 days, uh, and we've now dovetailed that same process, uh, anchoring to the homeless shelters. So it doesn't answer your question about how we cater to the needs of the, the healthier seniors who are in the nursing homes, but we can take this back and talk to, to the administrators. But just know that, uh, they're working really hard. Uh, we're trying to help them put out brush fires, um, in each of their facilities as much as we, we can support them on the ground.
Uh, thank you, Claude. Through you, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Jacob. I, I, this is no statement on how hard people are working. I know people are working hard. Again, this came to my attention because there was, there's a healthy senior in one of our facilities, a Cambridge-based facility, that's all but being ignored because of...
Counselor Simmons?
Um, the, the quality of care.
Counselor Simmons, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's 6:30. So unless you'd like to entertain a, a motion to extend, um, we'll have to do a roll call to adjourn. I don't want to cut you off. So...
No, cut me off on that one. I will, can bring in an order. The only, only other thing I was interested in is how, getting testing to as many people as possible. I yield a floor.
So I want to thank everyone who was on the line today. The city is just doing an amazing, amazing work. Uh, things are moving. There's so many moving pieces. Uh, but I want to thank everyone for their, their patience. And we'll see you next Monday. So on a motion by Counselor Tumi to adjourn, roll call.
On adjourning. Counselor Carlon?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern, absent. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Tumi?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zandervan?
Yes.
Is that a yes or a no, Counselor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, zero against, and one absent.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye now.
Thank you. Good night.
Stay well.
Thank you.
Good night.
Denise Simmons.
Quentin.
Is leading the meeting.
Quentin.
Is leading the meeting.